Good afternoon, everyone. It is my pleasure to welcome you all to this special public meeting of the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. As we, the one outside, the time is 1:06 PM by my watch and I'm calling this meeting to order. As we begin, I want to remind everyone that public comments can be submitted to the CRC during and after this meeting in writing via our website, www nj.gov/campos-meetings. And the deadline to submit written comments for this meeting is tomorrow, Tuesday, April 12th at 5 o'clock PM. Ms. Blake, can you please read the notice of the public meeting?
Madam Chairwoman, this is a special meeting of the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of the meeting was provided to the Asbury Park Press, Atlantic City Press, Bergen Record, Courier Post, Star Ledger, and the Trenton Times on April 4, 2022. The agenda and information regarding the virtual nature of the meeting due to the COVID-19 pandemic was also provided for publication and posted on the CRC website. The meeting time and location has also been posted on the website of the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission and with the Office of the Secretary of the State.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. Can you please take the roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Barker?
Present.
Commissioner Delcito Coso?
Present.
Vice Chair Delgado?
Present.
Commissioner Nash?
Present.
Chairwoman Wayne.
Present.
All members of the commission are present, and we now have a quorum. The first order of business is for the commission to go into executive session to discuss legal matters and litigation updates. These are discussions that are not shared with the public. We believe the executive session should take about 30 minutes today.
Madam Chairwoman, I move that we go into executive session.
Moved by Vice Chair Delgado. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Delcito Coso. Is there any discussion on this motion to go into executive session? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All who oppose say nay. Are there any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes. The commission will now go into executive session. We expect the executive session to last approximately 30 minutes. For those members of the public joining us, we will leave the live stream running during that time and will return once the executive session is done. We can expect to resume the open public session at approximately 1:39 PM. Thank you for your patience, everyone. All right, and we are back. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. The executive session has ended. It is now 1:40 PM, and we will resume the open and public portion of this meeting. Ms. Blake, can you please announce the next agenda item?
The next item on today's agenda is the chair's report.
Thank you. I want to note the importance that this week has for the CRC. Tomorrow marks the CRC's first birthday. In just one year, the CRC has done tremendous work to expand the medicinal cannabis program, adopt initial regulations for the recreational cannabis industry, define many people's expectations, and even upsetting those who had bet money against us. We also accepted well over 700 applications for adult-use cannabis businesses and issued nearly 70 awards for adult-use cannabis licenses. All of this, all the while, still building a brand-new state agency from the ground up. One year ago, there were only six people on the CRC's payroll, the five commissioners and the executive director. Back then, it was Director Brown and I who were creating forms and policies as well as drafting everything from commission resolutions to meeting minutes. I'm proud that the commission now boasts a staff of 52 hard-working public servants who make each day and each milestone possible, and we're still growing. In addition to these accomplishments, the commission has also been working with other state agencies and private partners to develop a one-stop shop for resources, explore cannabis workplace training programs, and search for existing funds that may be used to support New Jersey's cannabis entrepreneurs. As we approach the official launch of the Garden State cannabis industry, it's important to reiterate the shared responsibility that we all have for ensuring the industry is one that is safe, diverse, and accessible to anyone who wishes to support or participate in it. And that means state government, local government, private businesses, and members of the public. We each have a role to play in preserving our accomplishments and in making New Jersey a leader in this new sector. So, in closing, I just want to acknowledge the blood, sweat, and tears that were poured into this work. I thank my colleagues for their contributions and service to the state, and I wish the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission a very, very happy birthday. Thank you.
The next item up on the agenda is the executive director's report.
Madam Chair, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may, Director Brown.
Thank you, and thank you for those remarks. It's truly remarkable what we have accomplished in the last year. So, thank you for that, and thank you to your hard work, and those are the rest of the commissioners as well, to work with us to get us here. So, thank you. So, given that this is a special meeting, I'm not going to have a full executive director's report, but did just want to provide a brief update on, and you can go to the next slide, please, a brief update on recreational license applications, talk specifically about next steps for conditional license applicants and holders. That's once approved, or if approved by the commission, and then provide just a brief preview for the May executive director's report. So, next slide, please. So, this is where we stand on application acceptance over time. So, you can see, since we started accepting applications on December 15th, 2021, we, you know, received about 150 on day one, and then have seen a steady but consistent submission of applications between then and March 15th, when we opened up for class five retailers, in which case we saw 204 applications on that first day. And we've seen an increased volume since March 15th, but still a return to at least somewhat normal levels of application submission. Next slide, please. So, as far as total applications received thus far, we have 732, and this is as of March 30th, 732 applications submitted. 251 of those are for cultivators, 135 for manufacturers, and now 327 are for classified retailers. We do, you know, we continue to get some submissions, albeit small, for wholesalers, distributors, and delivery, which we do not, have not adopted regulations on, so we are not accepting applications for those license types. So, those will be rejected back to the applicants. But thus far, you know, tremendous interest in just, you know, we see we're taking in new applications every day, and we do have five applications for testing laboratories under review. And if in May meeting, we'll get more into details on the applicant pool as we did at the last meeting. So, next slide, please. So, I wanted to run through what happens for conditional license applicants after, if they are approved by the board, after board approval. So, there are some key steps that still need to happen before licenses are issued. And so, the licensed applicants that were approved at the last meeting, many are still in this process. And so, ostensibly, they have to confirm acceptance of the award. There's an initial verification of application information, and this is essentially a CRC staff member or staff members calling the applicant just to run through some questions and briefly verify that the information on the application is truthful and accurate. Once that is completed, then the application is approved in our licensing system, at which point the applicant is notified that they can then submit payment. And once payment is submitted, then the license is issued through that system. Importantly, the approvals from last meeting, and it is recommended for this meeting as well, conditional license awardees are given the additional time allowed to them by statute, an extra 45 days. So, ostensibly, a conditional license is, the duration is about five and a half months from the time it is issued in the licensing system. So, many are in process here. I know our team is working with them to make sure they can submit payment and get license issued, get that license issued so that that clock can start ticking, and they can then also go and submit a conversion application, which is the next step in that process to submit, to convert to an annual license. And I would say, I would recommend that applicants just continue to check our website for new resources being posted, particularly for conditional conversions, because that is a new license application type that is available in the system once that license is issued. And lastly, for the executive director's report, I did want to note, you know, at the last meeting, we provided a host of demographic information on both the applicant pool as well as those proposed for award. That is something we intend to continue. And, you know, I said at the last meeting that we wouldn't necessarily be doing it at every meeting, but one of the things that we will outline at the next meeting is what are the CRC's initial data reporting schedule on licensed applicants and holders, and essentially the cannabis industry is, so that everybody's clear on when to expect that information and at what intervals. And with that, I would like to yield it back to Madam Chair.
Thank you, Director Brown. Ms. Blake, please announce the next item on the agenda.
Next on the agenda is consideration of applications for conditional licenses.
Director Brown, can you please provide us with the summary of the applications for adult-use cannabis licenses that are up for consideration?
Absolutely. Please go to the next slide. So, for consideration by the commission today are 34 additional applications for conditional licensure. Of these, 34, 14 are for class-two manufacturers, and 20 are for class-one cultivation conditional licenses. Importantly, all these applications have gone through our review process, which starts with priority assignment. So, when they submit, applications are assigned to the relevant priority level based on responses in the application. So, social equity businesses receive highest overall priority. Diversely-owned businesses, those are businesses with either minority business enterprise certification, women-owned business enterprise certification, or disabled veteran-owned business certification. They get second overall priority, then impacts owned businesses, then applications receiving bonus points, and then finally, just the general pool of applications within those categories. Micro businesses receive preference over, receive priority over standard business applications. And additionally, conditional licenses overall are reviewed before annual licenses. Importantly, we don't have any yet, but once we have conditional conversions, those also receive priority over annual licenses. So, these have been assigned priority. That priority has been verified by information submitted in the application. The applications have undergone a completeness review, so staff had made sure that everything that's required by regulation and by our notice of application, application acceptance was present and responsive to the requirements of the application. These applications have been scored because they're conditional applications. They were scored for their business plan, operational summary, as well as the regulatory compliance plan, and finally, their plan to obtain liability insurance. All 34 of these applications before the commission have received full points for those measures. Finally, there was an initial review done for qualification, license holder qualification, limitations, and financial or management agreement review, where the individuals and entities involved with these applications were reviewed to make sure they were, in fact, qualified to hold a conditional license. And any proposed agreements were given an initial review against the restrictions on management services agreements, financial source agreements, and additionally, overall, on the conditional license holder qualification and those of license holders, owners, and principals. All 34 of these passed through that initial review. Finally, there was a quality control process by which they were reviewed a final time prior to recommendation, and now these 34 are recommended for approval by the commission. Again, these have been viewed, reviewed, vetted, and are recommended for approval to you all today. And I'll just switch to the next slide, please. I'll just leave this up here for one minute, and you can see this is the list of the first 24 conditional license applicants that are recommended for approval today. And the recommendation memo with the full list will also be available on our website. And every one of these applicants, if approved, would receive a final agency decision. And then you can go to the next slide, please, for the remaining slate. And these are the final 10 applicants that are recommended for approval today for a total of 34. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Director Brown. Do I have a motion from one of my commissioners to adopt the resolution concerning approval of conditional license applications for these 34 class-one cannabis cultivator and class-two cannabis manufacturer licenses?
Madam Chairwoman, I move that we adopt the consideration for conditional licenses on these.
Madam Chair, I second.
Moved by Commissioner, I'm sorry, moved by Vice Chair Delgado and seconded by Commissioner Nash. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Blake, can you please call the vote?
Surely. Commissioner Barker?
Aye.
Commissioner Delcito Coso?
Yes.
Vice Chair Delgado?
Aye.
Commissioner Nash?
Yes.
Chairwoman Wayne.
Yes.
The resolution passes. Next up on the agenda is the consideration of certifications for expanded alternative treatment centers.
Director Brown, can you please walk us through the expanded alternative treatment certification, alternative treatment centers certification materials that were submitted to the commission and the commission's recommendations?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would just like to just take a brief moment to just note another milestone that we've just hit with the approval of that resolution. The commission has now issued over 100 conditional license approvals. And we're not even a year old yet. So, just one more milestone. So, thank you all, and I wanted to thank the staff who've worked absolutely tirelessly on this, particularly our Deputy Executive Director, Kelly Anderson-Thomas, and our Director of Administration, Megan Tagliatari. So, thank you. So, moving on to consideration of ATC expansion. And I wanted to start off just by noting, and Madam Chair, you touched on this a bit in your chair's remarks, but, you know, over the last year, we've hit several milestones, and they've all been critical to getting us to this point. So, first was really strengthening access to medicinal cannabis by issuing new medicinal permits. Second was establishing a pathway to licensure for new businesses in the recreational cannabis market that put social equity first. And now that we have 100 conditional licenses approved and in process to eventually expand to annual licenses, many of those social equity businesses and diversely-owned businesses, we are well on our way to number two. And then the third is, you know, is in the statute and required by the statute, and, you know, I think is a part of getting this market off the ground as quickly as possible, but also, as you mentioned, doing so in a manner that's equitable and safely. And that's working with the current medicinal cannabis alternative treatment centers to assess the readiness under the law, under our regulations, to expand to recreational sales. And if you could go to the next slide, please. So, to date, we still only, we've received eight certifications from eight alternative treatment centers. I'll get into the recommendation here. The ones recommended today are those that have met, have been deemed to meet the requirements that have been set forth in statute and regulation. Those required conditions include municipal approvals. So, these alternative treatment centers need to have the authority at the local level to engage in both medical and recreational sales. The municipalities have to have opted into recreational sales. They have to prove that they have sufficient supply to continue to meet patient need after expansion. They have to have adequate plans to ensure patient access, particularly with the, with what will be very high demand for recreational cannabis products. They need to have a plan to address social equity and safety, our two core values to the commission here. And they need to have a pursuit with the statute and with our regulations. They need to have a labor peace agreement in place with a bona fide labor organization. Next slide, please. So, as far as our consideration, it's, you know, particularly on the patient side. It's focused on patients, focused on protecting their access, protecting their supply. The CRC has assessed the plans of the ATCs against, CRC staff have assessed these plans against the number of patients enrolled statewide, patient enrollment at each specific ATC. Inventory, that's the actual inventory, is a point in time, both statewide and at each specific ATC. Sales, both statewide sales of medicinal cannabis products and sales at each individual ATC that has submitted a certification. We took into account the current canopy. That's essentially the space that these facilities have to grow medicinal cannabis and grow cannabis. Period. And we looked at, you know, what we estimate the canopy needed to serve enrolled patients and use those to, you know, also use those to assess, but also look at data submitted from the ATCs to assess their production capacity against, again, the needs of patients, sales, the number of patients enrolled, those factors. Next slide, please. I want to highlight some, you know, some positive changes in market conditions over the last six months. So, overall canopy, that's the amount of gross base in the market, has increased by over 80,000 square feet. We've been monitoring supply, and I can tell you that the supply in the market is increasing every month. The amount of cannabis and cannabis products in the market is going up every month. And one thing we've seen, particularly in the last four months, is that we're actually seeing some movement on price. Now, it's not across the board, and usually, it seems to be based on sales, sale prices and promotions in some cases, but we are seeing consistently more economically-priced products in the market. And this is, this is true, I think, across the board. Additionally, since we, since the commission issued the 2019 RFA awards at the end of 2021, we have 30 additional dispensaries that are in process to get permits. And then there's 300,000 square feet of canopy in the pipeline to get permitted and operational. And I could tell you that each day, we're getting closer and closer to some of those facilities from the 2019 RFA coming online and becoming operational, particularly the cultivators. And initially, that will be focused strictly on medicinal cannabis supply. Next slide, please. So, the applicants under, the ATCs under consideration today, that submitted certifications in the southern region are Acreage CCF New Jersey, Care Leaf, and Columbia Care. In the central region, Verano. In the northern region, GTI New Jersey, Ascend New Jersey, and Terrace End. I'll cover our recommendation, but they've all submitted the necessary items required by statute and regulation, and they've been reviewed by staff, and we're prepared to make a recommendation on these entities today. Next slide, please. Talking here a second about overall market supply. I think it's important to walk the public, walk stakeholders through some of the projections that we've been looking at here at the CRC. And so, when we think about recreational demand, we're essentially looking at a couple of things. We're looking at New Jersey-based consumers. We're looking at consumers that may come to New Jersey, either from neighboring states or as tourists and stay and purchase. We're also looking at the number of patients and their buying habits and what potentially they need to meet their ongoing needs for medicinal cannabis. And then finally, we're looking at production capacity. And, you know, ostensibly, how much alternative treatment centers can reasonably produce based on their current canopy and their current production. So, I want to present here two similar models here that look at this. And, you know, what we did was we estimated based on a patient population of 130,000, looking at potential recreational consumers in New Jersey. And this is, I think, a conservative estimate, but it is consistent with how this market could launch, which is with limited, you know, limited dispensaries, which could limit demand somewhat. The way we got to the roughly 800,000 New Jersey consumers is took the total population of New Jersey, took the total population over the age of 21, and then looked at use rates in other states and estimated that of that total population over the age of 21, likely about 12% of New Jerseians may be cannabis users. As far as those from neighboring states, we looked at, you know, similar potential use rates there. Tried to estimate, you know, reasonable number that we anticipate could make the drive over to New Jersey, hopefully stay in a hotel room, make a recreational purchase over the course of a year. And then we use that to essentially estimate what the overall recreational demand would be. We used the 130,000 patient mark, which we're close to. We're at over 128,000 now, inching closer to 130,000 to estimate medical demand. We also looked at data from the industry and also data from our patient registry to estimate that medical demand. And so, with the medical demand, we're looking at 130,000 patients purchasing roughly one ounce per month. I think the average in the market is just under that. And that gets you to about 100,000 pounds of medical demand over the course of a year. On the recreational demand side, we estimated that recreational consumers could purchase around, you know, those living in New Jersey who might go to dispensary repeated times, might go to retail repeated times, could purchase roughly four ounces per year. And then finally, for those who might be, you know, visiting New Jersey while on a trip, you know, they're going to purchase significantly less on average than somebody who lives in New Jersey and is a repeated consumer. So, you know, we also, using those numbers, got to, you know, potential recreational demand of roughly 260,000 pounds per year. And then we looked at production, and here we use two measures, one which was supplied by the New Jersey Cannabis Trade Association, which is essentially the association of alternative treatment centers. They said they're getting an average of 65 grams per square foot production. We also looked at 40 grams per square foot, which tends, it's a pretty consistently-used measure. It's based on a Botech analysis out of Washington State. We looked at both those, ran both those models, and looked at those scenarios. And importantly, you know, both scenarios show deficits in both markets or in overall deficits. But the deficit was only on the recreational side of things. So, ostensibly, you know, current capacity, we have enough to cover medicinal consumers with what they are purchasing now. So, you know, this leads us to what we recommended at our last meeting and what the ATCs, we've been working with the ATCs to get commitments on, which they've all committed to, which is to implement safeguards to ensure that there's a minimum supply set aside for patients, both as far as packaged products and for bulk products. So, you know, a minimum supply based on an estimation of past sales for actual packaged products. Those are products that are ready to sell. And then a set aside also for bulk products and products that are in process of getting to the package stage. So, this could be flour that's in the dry or curing stage, or it could be bulk extracts that are essentially just awaiting that final stage to be assembled into. to be assembled into a cannabis product and then packaged in, and, and ready for sale. And what I can tell you is all the ATCs that are, that were prepared to recommend today have shown, have demonstrated both by their own data and by the analysis that we've conducted, that they can meet those safeguards, that they can ensure that medical patients have the supply that they need with some leftover for, for recreational cannabis. And that's why, you know, with these safeguards, the overall market supply really doesn't stop us from looking at individual ATC supply and judging that on those individual merits. This should, this should also be, you know, a, a call to action for new entrepreneurs. There is definitely, you know, regardless of what happens today, there's unmet demand in this market. And we intend to release further data on this as, as, as we go forward at the CRC. But, you know, we need new businesses to keep applying. We've now approved, approved, the commission has now approved over a hundred conditional licenses. You know, we need new entrepreneurs to continue to come into this market, help us meet this demand and get this market to, to where it needs to be. But overall, there's no, you know, this market wide situation really doesn't stop us with those safeguards from looking at the individual ATCs and, and looking at their individual supply and how they're meeting the needs of their specific patients. Next slide, please. So the second piece of analysis are patient access plans. And at coming out of last meeting, we put together some, some guidance for, for the, the ATCs to consider. These include, you know, fourteen patient only hours per week, exclusive parking options at the ATC's exclusive point of sale systems for patients, so they don't have to wait in lines as long as recreational consumers express access to the ATC. Ability to reserve products ahead of time, which I know many of the ATCs already offer with online ordering. Next slide, please. A patient access hotline, so that there's a live person that patients can call if they're having trouble accessing, accessing a dispensary. Continue to have private counseling areas for patients and, and private counseling options. It, you know, requiring ATCs to have virtual meetings or conference calls with their registered patient and caregiver base to provide info on a patient access plan before any launch of recreational sales, so that patients have the information that they need to continue to access their alternative treatment centers. And then, you know, we'll be asking, we'd be asking the industry for weekly reports on patient access. And so, yeah, we're going over the, the, you know, the, what's in the ATC certifications here. And rather than ostensibly me running through all their patient access plans, we're going to invite the, the alternative treatment centers themselves to come up and, and just have a representative, take three minutes and walk the commission through, but also more importantly, walk the public through. And, and any patients are watching the patient access plans that have been submitted and have been under consideration by the commission. So I'm going to turn it over now to Ms. Blake, our communications director, to call through our, our invited speakers.
Okay, thank you. Edie Brown and our first speaker on behalf of Acreage Holdings is Brian Sekaro. Brian, go ahead. Brian?
Hey, can you hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, you got it. Wow, I love that big clock ticking. So in regards to our retail hours, as, as Jeff said, fourteen hours spread over multiple days, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, the first two hours in the morning, Tuesday, Thursday, the last two hours in the evening, and then four hours on Sunday. So obviously we will evaluate that as we continue, as we move forward. Parking, we've reserved parking in both of the locations that will have adult use here in Egg Harbor Township and also Williamstown. In store, separate priority lines, so kind of think of it as TSA pre-check. Or, you know, elite members at a, at a, at a hotel will have stanchions with separate lines for medical and rec patients. We'll have dedicated POS systems, point of sale for, for the medical patients. We'll, you know, adjust that as demand requires, but there will always be dedicated spots for those patients that are, that are in the, the pre-check line to get in quickly. As far as inventory and menu, we'll be using separate menuing systems for both adult use and medical, which allows us to set thresholds for product availability. So think of it this way, that we would have both the product on both menus, but if we drop to a certain level, it disappears from the adult use menu. So we can continue to offer it for our medical patients and we'll, we will set those thresholds based on historical buying patterns for those strains in our medical, for our medical patients, so that we're sure that we have enough available. Online, we currently do online ordering, we will continue to do online warning, ordering for medical patients only. That way they can reserve their product in advance and pick it up anytime the next day. When they choose to come in and pick it up, they don't have to come in just in the designated medical only time slots. We have a hotline now, we'll make sure that that's available for every hour that we are open, seven days a week. Consultation rooms are onsite as they are today, we'll continue to do so. We currently offer curbside pickup, we will continue to do that just for medical patients. So that gives them an opportunity to get their product more easily and also to reserve it through online ordering. So those kind of go hand in hand. And then finally, as far as we, you know, communicating our plans to our potential customers in adult use and then also to our medical patients, we'll have a pre-recorded webinar or a message on our website explaining all of the, the, the strategies that we're putting in place to make sure we're creating preferential treatment to our medical patients from our parking, to our lines, to our designated POS, to online ordering, all that will be covered in that webinar. So thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next up will be Matt Darren on behalf of Curaleaf. Matt Darren, go ahead.
Good afternoon, my name is Matt Darren, I'm U.S. President for Curaleaf. We appreciate the time to present our plans to you all today. We've made significant investments in facilities, technology and personnel to ensure availability of products and access for both medical patients and adult use guests. Curaleaf is an industry leader which has successfully transitioned from medical to adult use markets in Illinois, Massachusetts and Arizona. We've navigated the complexities of adult use launches previously and have incorporated these lessons learned into our plans in New Jersey. To be clear, the transition to adult use will not alter our commitment to our medical patients who've been the heart of the medical cannabis program for the past six years. Our first objective is proactive communication with our medical patients. We have a strong communication system with our existing patient community and are able to quickly and efficiently communicate with them. We'll be hosting an educational town hall for the medical community on April eighteenth to help educate them on our plans and answer additional questions that they have. We also operate a call center that's open seven days a week from eight AM to ten PM for them to contact us with any questions. We've made a number of operational changes and enhancements both inside and outside our dispensaries to ensure access for medical patients. We've expanded our service hours to include medical patient only hours. We're dedicating the first and last hour of each day of our eight AM to eight PM schedule solely to serve medical patients. This amounts to an additional fourteen hours per week at each of our Belmar, Edgewater Park and Bordentown locations for medical patients only will be permitted in the stores. Additional, each dispensary will have dedicated lines and point of sale systems to ensure medical patients have expedited entry and service at each of our locations. We've, we've increased our POS systems to ensure swift service for medical patients. We have medical only point of sale stations, including eight at Belmar, seven at Bordentown and five at Edgewater Park. We've expanded our staffing in store to accommodate the increased flow and ensure medical patients continue to receive the high quality care they're accustomed to. We've expanded our parking as well and are reserving priority spots for medical patients. At our busiest dispensary in Belmar, we now have two hundred and twelve parking spaces under control. We've also worked closely with the local municipalities for security and traffic flow. We've implemented a number of technology solutions as well. We offer secure online ordering through our website, which allows patients to order from the comfort of their homes and provides estimated pickup times. This is a popular option for patients. We've also purchased sixty four additional iPads for mobile ordering in line for our staff to utilize at our three locations. We're ready to serve the medical and adult use markets with products as well. We've been preparing for many months for this. We've tripled our cultivation capacity in the state. We have more than ample supply of available product to service both the medical market and the adult use market, including flower, vape, sedatives and medical products. And we continue to introduce new products to the market as well. In the event of any shortage of products, we will prioritize our medical patients before serving the adult use market. And as we plan and forecast, we're reserving products for the medical program based on recent quarters to ensure available supply. In conclusion, we are well prepared for the market and also ensuring that we protect our patients' access to their medicine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Voli Hayhurst. Voli?
Hello, everyone. My name is Voli Hayhurst, VP of Operations for Columbia Care. We put together a comprehensive ten point plan that I'm excited to share with you guys today that'll ensure superior patient access. So first off, patient only hours. We carved out fourteen specific hours of the day, including morning, evening and Saturday hours to help meet the demand. We reserve parking for patients in, in specifically in Deptford. We work with the landlord to secure three medical only parking spaces. In Violin, we are a standalone building, so we carved out three medical only parking spaces for that building as well. In addition, we wanted to be a good community partner and neighbor in Deptford, so we, we asked the landlord to carve out some parking spaces for our surrounding neighbor as well. So once we get the, once the patients start to come into the building, we, we carved out some patient only queues and POS stations. The, the, once the patient enters the front door, they will go into a queue that will take them to the reception area, obviously prioritizing medical first. Once they're through the reception area onto the sales floor, they'll be met by three medical only patients, stations. That way they can get their medicine and, and get out the door. We'll continue to offer online ordering and curbside pickup. And at any time, if, if, if the medical need sees fit, we can implement express pickups as well. We do have a, we did implement express pickups in both locations in Violin and in Deptford. We will have, and we did implement a patient access hotline. The hotline will go directly to the medical POS stations area. That way the patients can have access directly to, to the, to the people that are dealing with, with the medical patients in place. We'll continue to have online counseling sessions and also we have education bars at both sites as it's, as we speak. We'll, we'll keep up with that. We're going to implement a waitlist me app. So this is in an effort to help move a lot of the adult use, if there is congestion, it can get the, the adult use consumers out of the way. It's basically like a, an app, like when you go into a restaurant, you put in your name, it'll help them go out about throughout their day and then they can come back and purchase. But what it does is it creates a, a nice shopping experience for the, for the, for the medical use consumer as they walk in. One thing we are proud of, we do have fourteen wholesale agreements and LOIs throughout the state that will continue to add superior patient access by bringing a lot of the state of New Jersey down to the south, giving good, giving superior patient access. With that, we will implement a pre-recorded meeting to, to share all of these plans with our patients. And for total transparency, obviously weekly, we will submit a report to the CRC with our access, week times availability and all of those, but thank you.
Thank you. James Leventis of Verano. Mr. Leventis?
Thank you, can you hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead.
This is James Leventis, I'm Executive Vice President at Verano, New Jersey. On behalf of everyone at our company, I want to thank the commission first for considering our certification to expand, to expand into the personal use program and also for giving us the opportunity to directly present our plan for patient access once the program does launch. Much like some of our colleagues, we're going to be designating medical patient only hours at our dispensaries. That is going to be the opening hour and the closing hour of every business day. It's going to be exclusive to patient access at all of our dispensaries. We are going to be designating exclusive parking for our patients. This is going to be fifteen to twenty spaces right at the front of our dispensaries, right by the entrance for easy access. We have ample parking throughout parking spaces at, at, at all of our locations, but these are going to be designated exclusively for our medical patients that roll out of the program. In addition, we're going to be providing exclusive point of sale stations for patients. Right now, we're going to be designating two at both of our dispensaries in the areas closest to the door. But we're going to be monitoring traffic flow and, and, and patient access throughout that time and can easily expand if we're seeing an influx of patients. In addition to that, we're going to be providing express registration for our patients. So we'll have a separate registration counter at our locations for express check-in for medical patients. If any lines do happen to form, although we're not expecting that to happen, medical patients are going to be brought into the front of the queue to check in and enter the sales floor past any personal use customers that may be there. In addition, two things that we're doing to go a little bit above and beyond, we are going to be rolling out home delivery for our medical patients, we're expecting to launch that program on Wednesday of this week and continue rolling that out throughout the launch of the personal use program. This is going to be at least initially exclusive to our medical patients. In addition, we're going to be designating five parking spots out in the front of our dispensaries for express curbside pickup to only our medical patients to try to preserve their access to medicine. In addition, we're going to be providing separate menus for medical patients and personal use customers in order to preserve supply. We'll be maintaining our patient access hotline and, and circulate information about that to our patients in the coming weeks. We're going to maintain our private consultation areas for one-on-one meetings with any patients who want to discuss their access to medicine. And we'll be hopefully launching a virtual conference to go into a little more depth of this plan with our medical patients this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Dina Rollman for Green Thumb Industries. Dina Rollman?
Hi, my name is Dina Rollman and I oversee government relations for Green Thumb Industries. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak about our commitment to New Jersey's medical cannabis patients. Green Thumb fully supports the commission's goal of prioritizing patient supply and access while New Jersey makes this historic transition to recreational sales. Patients have been the backbone of the New Jersey industry and will continue to be. First, the CRC developed a formula for calculating and ensuring that each ATC maintains a minimum adequate supply and reserve for patients. Green Thumb has at least six point four times that minimum amount of supply and reserve, which translates into approximately twenty five months of supply on hand. We will have adequate supply. Second, Green Thumb dispensary in Paramus will remain medical only. Patients can always go there and not confront a line of recreational customers. Our stores in Patterson and Bloomfield will service both patients and adult use customers. Third, based on our experience transitioning from medical only to adult use sales in other states, we have developed best practices for prioritizing patients. Those practices include dedicated hours daily, which will be the first two hours of the day, dedicated point of sale registers and dedicated patient lines. We have also submitted detailed traffic plans that are in the commission's packets that show how we will optimize the patient experience both inside the store and outside in the parking lot. We also will have product reservations. Patients will be encouraged, as they are now, to preorder their products. And we will continue to educate patients about how to use iPads, personal phones and other devices to do the pre-ordering. We will provide a patient access hotline staffed by internal onsite teams during all ATC business hours. We currently have and will continue to have private patient consultation spaces at each of our facilities. We will host multiple calls to educate patients on our patient access plan. We will schedule those calls for the week prior to the launch, the week of the launch and each week thereafter for the first month. These calls will be scheduled at different times each week to accommodate various varying patient schedules. And we will post details on these schedules and informational opportunities in emails and text messages so that patients are aware. We will provide the weekly reporting required by the CRC on our medical patient access, including wait times at our stores to make sure that they are in line with what they should be. We currently offer and will continue to offer curbside pickup for our medical patients and we will continue to do that. And we will be expanding into home delivery for patients as well. We will have a dedicated patient menu that will prioritize patient access to products. And we will also be making sure that medical only parking is reserved closest to the front of our ATC store. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Mike Conway for Mike Conway for Ascend Wellness is next.
Go ahead. Hi, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to share access plan with you. I'll start outside first. So, you know, with parking, we will have 130 spots on location. 10 to 15 of those be dedicated to medical access only, with five closest to the facility being there for patients with limited mobility access as well as curbside. The patients will also have access to the front door without waiting in any lines that may be present. You know, we'll also have team members that are, they're monitoring, monitoring any lines that are outside to ensure no medical patients accidentally jump on those lines to allow them into the facility to one of our two medical check-in podiums. The medical patient will be checked in as normal, and then will be immediately allowed into the dispensary floor. Will they be able to go to one of three medical express lane registers? We do have the ability to increase the amount of registers based on the demand, but we do feel that three registers based on our current demand is, is more than enough to, to handle the, the access for, for current patients. But we will have the ability to increase that access as needed. The patient will then be taken care of if they do have a need for a private consultation. We do have two private consultation rooms that are available to ensure that that patient does have the privacy, you know, when the dispensary is busy with other adult-use customers. So, so no issues with any privacy for the patients, and then they'll be able to be rung up as, as normal and exit the facility. We do have a couple other access points, and patients can place orders up to two days in advance. This is something we already offer, and we'll transition that over. We do plan to hold multiple educational events to explain these access points and the elevated access and express access to our current patients. And we'll advertise that in our normal SMS email as well as website to ensure that patients can have access to those meetings and as well, you know, know what we are going to be doing for the updated access. We also will have a dedicated phone line for our patients to ask questions. There'll be, for example, you know, press three for medical patients. That'll be staffed at all times of, of business by one of our team members. We'll also have hours of operation as requested by the CRC. We'll have 14 dedicated hours to patient access. Those hours will be posted on our website, and they will be subject to change based on, you know, the, the needs of the patient. We'll make sure that we, we have those scheduled when the patients do need that time. And something that we are going to be rolling out for the transition is home delivery. I'll be delivering to patients in Bergen and Passaic counties to ensure that we do have that access for patients that may not want to work with the increased crowds in the locations. And with that, I do thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next up is Chantel Elsner for Terracine. Chantel, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you fine. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, CRC, industry leaders and community members. My name is Chantel Elsner, and I'm the Senior Vice President of Terracine Retail Operations. I have the great pleasure today of providing an overview of our operational plans as we shift into an adult-use consumer market. The Terracine team has used a thoughtful and thorough approach to prepare our people, our product, our partnerships, our process, and our patients to ensure that we are optimized for a successful launch. We are founded on diversity and inclusion. Of our employees, 63% identify as Latinx or African-American, 25% live in impact zones, and 43% are women. Our team is highly trained and beyond excited to start serving adult-use consumers in addition to the patients that they know and love. The Apothecary and dispensaries will be offering a robust product assortment for medical patients and consumers. Of those products, we will be offering Kindtree and Vahala plus a wide assortment of third-party brands. Our operations team has a clear plan to maintain reliable supply of medical cannabis and products that are all tested by certified third-party labs. We are working in partnership with the CRC and plan to provide recently aborted minority-owned businesses, businesses with prioritized product, supply, and pricing. Our community engagement team supports the communities through education, volunteer events, sponsorships, and charitable donations. We continually seek out community sponsorships and events that align with our outreach pillars: wellness, social equity, community, and kindness. We are working hand-in-hand with each of our municipalities to coordinate efforts and ensure a smooth adult-use launch. We have a well-controlled and thoroughly monitored inventory plan that focuses on ensuring consistent stock of product. We have sophisticated inventory management systems that will continuously monitor, continuously analyze the supply chain and ensure medical cannabis availability. Our system also has the necessary safeguards in place to reserve appropriate quantities of cannabis for medical and consumer purchases. We're stick, we're strict adult-use consumer purchases to one ounce and ensure that all consumers are over the age of 21. Our stores have dedicated patient versus, versus consumer lines, prioritizing patients, elderly, and those with mobility issues, prioritize customer service, patient-only parking, in addition to ample consumer parking, waitlist, express pickup, and curbside. We also have all of the necessary safety and security protocols in place. At the Apothecary, our patients always come first. We offer patient-only shopping hours, exclusive online ordering, express access, dedicated registers, loyalty programs, and promotional pricing. We also offer support for patients and caregivers through consultations and education and have a live operator customer service line, which will be available to all of our patients during every operating hour. We are also excited to announce that patient home delivery is coming soon. Download our Apothecary app and find out more. Thank you again for your time today. We are grateful for the continued partnership with the CRC, industry leaders and community members, as we all work together to launch adult-use consumer sales in New Jersey. We are proud to be grown in the Garden State.
Thank you. Executive Director Brown, that was the last ATC speaker.
Thank you. So, and thanks to the, the ATCs that presented on those plans, you know, in the week, about seven, little over seven, I guess, eight days following the last meeting, CRC staff went on a host of site visits at all of the ATCs that submitted certifications. And two, you know, two points of really robust conversation about plans were what you just heard, kind of the patient access plans, both from an inventory and an access perspective. And secondly, was related to some of the social equity and, and safety plans. And so please go to the next slide. So I did want to highlight, you know, some of the things that we heard consistently across the board from, from the industry in these meetings when it comes to social equity and, and safety, particularly on the equity front. And I can tell you that, you know, my, my thoughts on, on these meetings was that they went incredibly well, and, and I thought that the, the medical industry, the, the ATCs rose to the, the task before, put before them both, you know, by the statute, by our regulations and by this board. So as far as what, some of the things that the ATCs have committed to do, and some of the things that they are already doing are providing expungement assistance, job training, and pathways to employment in the cannabis industry. I think the best example of this was one actually followed candidates from that point of getting a, a conviction expunged all the way through, then, you know, providing them with assistance in job training and then actually job opportunities in the cannabis industry. There are partnerships with nonprofits and community groups aimed at promoting diversity and equity in the cannabis industry. Some of these groups commented at a lot of our meetings and are becoming a growing force within the cannabis industry here in New Jersey. Training and technical assistance for social business, social equity business applicants in our conditional licensing process. So several of the ATCs said they were actually running webinars and providing free support to potential social equity businesses on how to get through our application process. Commitment to hiring a diverse workforce with an emphasis on impact zones and economically disadvantaged areas. And at the last meeting, I shared our regulation, which requires every licensed cannabis business to make a good faith effort to hire individuals who either have past cannabis convictions or have lived in an economically disadvantaged area for five of the last 10 years. They've also committed to utilizing diverse vendors and contractors for ancillary services, providing direct funding to community-based nonprofits that serve impact zones, economically disadvantaged areas, funding commitments in, in a way compliant with our regs to social equity and diversely-owned businesses. Additionally, preferable wholesale terms for new businesses that could be coming online. And then finally, support services for, and post-incarceration assistance for individuals who have been incarcerated for cannabis and marijuana. And, you know, commissioners have all had an opportunity to read these, these certifications, to read these, these plans, both for patient access, for supply, and their social equity and safety plans, and, and to see the evolution of those plans as, as we've gone through this, this process. And I can tell you, you know, speaking for the interdisciplinary team of staff that were at these meetings and have read these plans, I, I was certainly impressed by what has been brought to the table. So next, next slide, please. The best laid plans are only plans unless they come to fruition. And so, you know, before I get to specific recommendations here, I want to propose some post-award conditions to the board, and these are based on both conversations with staff as well as conversations with, with individual commissioners. But really, the key issues for these post-award conditions are critically maintaining adequate supply for patients, ensuring access for patients is not reduced at any dispensaries that are approved by the Commission to transition to recreational sales, accountability to those social equity commitments that I just spoke about, and those that, that, you know, I didn't speak about but are in these plans, and then a protection for cannabis workers' rights. So next, next slide, please. So what, what CRC staff proposed as conditions to any approvals that are issued by the Commission today are if ATC is not able to meet the, the commitment to continue to prioritize access for patients and set aside supply, that they would be subject to $10,000 per day in fines. And then if they routinely are fined because of a lack of supply or a lack of access, then possible license suspension if that patient access and supply is not preserved or protected. Secondly, required reporting, periodic reporting on social equity commitments in accordance with standards that will be issued by our Office of Diversity and Inclusion. And our Director Wesley McWhite is, is on the meeting. And this is so we can hold ATCs accountable, so the public can, can hold them accountable and us to what's been committed to in, in these plans. And finally, provisions to ensure adherence to both the labor piece and collective bargaining requirements in the statute and regulations. And what I propose, and, you know, thank you to the commissioners who, you know, really pushed for this in some of our individual meetings. But, you know, workers' choices must be protected. And so what we propose is ostensibly, you know, based on what's in, in the law that requires ATCs to sign a labor peace agreement and, and in some cases, collective bargaining agreements, ensuring that those, that the obligation to do so is tied to what workers want and, and their choices. So ostensibly, if workers, if a majority of workers, you know, have shown support for a particular bona fide labor organization, then the ATC is obligated to enter into a labor peace agreement with that labor organization. And secondly, if they've, and this is consistent with what's in our regulations, if a majority of those workers have, and what's in the statute, have voiced that support for a particular bona fide labor organization, then the ATC is responsible for making a good faith effort to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with that bona fide labor organization. So those are some of the conditions. The other conditions, to the extent they're there, or in the, include reports on the patient access measures and progress there. Those are all in the memo that the board has before it. Now I'm going to get to the specific recommendations here. And, you know, I'll, I'll note that the, really, it all goes back to what's in, in the law. And the law says that we are to assess the readiness of these ATCs in accordance with really three primary issues. One is the, their certification that they can have adequate supply. Second is the certification that they can uphold and, and keep patient access and not negatively impact patient access with the addition of recreational sales. And then finally, that they have all the necessary local approvals in place to, to move forward and to operate as a recreational cannabis business. So all of the ATCs, all seven that are before you today, all, all seven that we've heard from, they have all been reviewed by staff, their certifications have been reviewed by staff. We looked at market-wide conditions. We do not see any market-wide concerns, given that we've recommended safeguards for protecting patient supply. We do not see any market-wide concerns with moving these ATCs forward. And then secondly, all of the ATCs here, we believe, have, have proven and have shown that they have adequate supply for their medical patients, that they are willing to put in place the necessary mechanisms to protect that supply and ensure that medical patients are not impacted. As you've heard, they have clearly thought out patient access plans to, from the hours to the parking spots, to how patients will access their dispensaries, allowing for flexibility in, in how someone can order, how someone can get their cannabis. Some are, have been approved now for home delivery and are moving forward with that. Others are doing curbside pickup. Some are doing both. So they've, you know, all the ATCs, we believe, have also met that certification of patient access and shown that they will consistently provide patient access. And then finally, they've all shown that they have the necessary local approvals in place to support this expansion. So next slide, please. So in the South, based on that, the assessment of supply, patient access, municipal compliance and approval, as well as a thorough review against our regulations and the guidance issued to the ATCs, including the submission of that social equity plan, CRC staff recommend that the Commission approve for expansion, Acreage CCF, Cureleaf, and Columbia Care. Next slide, please. In the Central Region, CRC staff recommend that the Commission approve Verano for expansion. And next slide, please. In the Northern Region, CRC staff recommend that the Commission approve Ascend Wellness, GTI, and Terracine all for expansion as well. Again, this is based on a thorough review of what's in the statute, our authority, our regulatory authority, and those regulatory requirements, as well as the realization that what we're proposing as far as post-award conditions, put the necessary teeth in place to ensure compliance, ongoing compliance with patient access and, and, you know, accountability with their social equity plans and accountability to ensure that, that workers have the, the rights and the choices that, that, that they are afforded by law. So those are the recommendations, and with that, Madam Chair, I will turn it back over. Oh, sorry, one more slide. So in total, these recommendations represent, if, if approved, seven Class 1 cultivation licenses, seven Class 2 manufacturing license, licenses, and 13 Class 5 retailer licenses. And then one last slide. So for any that do, that are approved by the, the board, the next steps following approval would be an operational assessment for regulatory compliance. They would have to pay a full ATC expansion fees based on what they're approved to expand to. Then there would be an issuance of license and then commencement of operations under the new licenses. The, the, the path to get there does not have to be any specific length of time. It's based on when those ATCs meet those operational requirements and that license is issued. So, you know, I'll, I'll just stop there. It doesn't have to be 30 days. It can be less. It can be more, depending on that operational assessment and when they can meet those requirements. So again, of the seven ATCs proposed for exten, expansion, CRC staff believe that all seven have met the certification of adequate supply, certification of patient access, and locked up the requisite municipal compliance and approval to, to be moved forward by this board, and, and we recommend that the board approve all seven. So with that, Madam Chair, I yield back to you.
Thank you, Director Brown, and thank you to all of the Alternative Treatment Center representatives who were able to present their patient access plans for the Commission and the broader public today. For the commissioners, we'll be proceeding with the votes for these certifications for standard alternative treatment centers, one by one. So I will ask for a motion to adopt the resolution concerning acceptance of certification for alternative treatment centers to expand operations to the adult personal-use cannabis market with respect to Acreage CCF.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt this resolution for Acreage Holdings.
Moved by Commissioner Nash, seconded by Commissioner Delcito Coso. Is there any discussion on this motion with respect to Acreage CCF? Hearing none. Ms. Blake, can you please call the vote?
Commissioner Barker? Commissioner Delcito Coso?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Delgado?
Aye.
Commissioner Nash?
Yes.
Chairwoman Wei Nu?
Abstain.
The resolution passes. The next up, the next item for consideration, the expansion for Cureleaf.
I'll ask for a motion for the resolution, to adopt the resolution concerning Cureleaf.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the resolution for Cureleaf.
A second, Madam Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Nash and seconded by Commissioner Barker. Is there any discussion on this motion with respect to Cureleaf? Hearing none. Ms. Blake, please call the vote.
Commissioner Barker? Commissioner Delcide Coso?
Yes.
Vice Chair Delgado?
Aye.
Commissioner Nash?
Yes.
Chairwoman Wei Nu?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Commissioner.
Abstain.
The resolution passes. Next up is the expansion certification for Columbia Care.
For a motion for the, to adopt the resolution with respect to Columbia Care.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt this resolution concerning the acceptance of certification for Columbia Care to expand operations to the adult personal use cannabis market.
A second, Madam Chair. I defer to Commissioner Nash.
That's all right. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Delcide Coso and a second by Commissioner Nash with respect to Columbia Care. Ms. Blake, can you please call the vote? I'm sorry, apologies. Before we go to that, is there any discussion on this motion with respect to Columbia Care? Hearing none. Ms. Blake, can you now please call the vote?
Commissioner Barker?
Aye.
Commissioner Delcide Coso?
Yes.
Vice Chair Delgado?
Aye.
Commissioner Nash?
Yes.
Chairwoman Wei Nu?
Abstain.
The resolution passes. Next item up for consideration is the expansion certification for Verano.
I'll ask for a motion to adopt the resolution with respect to Verano.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the resolution for expansion for Verano.
Moved by Commissioner Nash.
A second, Madam Chair.
Seconded by Commissioner Barker, thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion with respect to Verano? Hearing none. Ms. Blake, can you please call the vote?
Commissioner Barker?
Aye.
Commissioner Delcide Coso?
Yes.
Vice Chair Delgado?
Yes.
Commissioner Nash?
Yes.
Chairwoman Wei Nu?
Abstain.
The resolution passes. The next item for consideration is the expansion certification for Green Thumb Industries.
Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution for expansion with respect to Green Thumb Industries? Do I hear a motion?
Chair, I move to adopt the motion concerning Green Thumb Industries. I move to adopt the resolution concerning Green Thumb Industries.
Moved by Commissioner Barker. Commissioner Delcide Coso, I believe that was you coming in for a second. All right, thank you.
That's right.
Is there any discussion on this motion with respect to Green Thumb Industries? Hearing none. Ms. Blake, can you please call the vote?
Commissioner Barker?
Aye.
Commissioner Delcide Coso?
Yes.
Vice Chair Delgado?
Aye.
Commissioner Nash?
Yes.
Chairwoman Wei Nu?
Abstain.
The resolution passes. Next up for consideration is the expansion certification for Ascend Wellness.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution with respect to Ascend Wellness?
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the resolution for expansion of Ascend Wellness.
I second that, Madam Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Nash and seconded by Commissioner Delcide Coso. Is there any discussion on this motion with respect to Ascend Wellness? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Blake, can you please call the vote?
Commissioner Barker?
Aye.
Commissioner Delcide Coso?
Yes.
Vice Chair Delgado?
Aye.
Commissioner Nash?
Yes.
Chairwoman Wei Nu?
Abstain.
The resolution passes. Next for consideration is the expansion certification for Terrace End.
Do I hear a motion from the commissioners to adopt the resolution with respect to Terrace End? Last, last call for a motion with respect to Terrace End.
I move to adopt the resolution concerning the acceptance of this certification for Terrace End, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Delcide Coso. Is there a second?
A second, Madam Chair.
Seconded by Commissioner Barker, thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion with respect to Terrace End? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Blake, please call the vote.
Commissioner Barker?
Aye.
Commissioner Delcide Coso?
Yes.
Vice Chair Delgado?
Yes.
Commissioner Nash?
No.
Chairwoman Wei Nu?
Abstain.
The resolution passes.
Madam Chair, may I have the floor?
You may. Commissioner Nash?
Thank you. Upon careful review of the individual ATC certifications, I was pleased that most of them recognized the legislative intent and submitted meaningful labor peace agreements. However, I did not find the same with this applicant certification, and that is why I voted no. Thank you, Madam Chair. I yield the floor back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Nash. Yes, I'm happy to see that some of the ATCs have decided to take this seriously and button up their plans for expansion. Last week, it was, I'm sorry, not last week. At the last public meeting, it was noted that staff would have to do a little extra handholding where needed. Now, as the CRC takes the training wheels off of this bicycle, it is up to the expanded alternative treatment centers to ensure compliance with their plans, the commission's regulations, and the law. Notwithstanding these approvals, which are based on demonstrated supply for patients because of the demand expressed by members of the public and pointing to the information and data analysis provided by Director Brown today, I do expect to see some heavy lines, long lines, and heavy traffic around some of these facilities. But I do expect the ATCs to work with the CRC and the towns in which the businesses are located to ensure that local officials are properly informed and ready for potential lines and traffic, that the facilities are ready for final onsite inspection, and that the CRC knows when the expanded ATC expects to start those adult use sales. As mentioned by Director Brown, expanded ATCs are not authorized to immediately begin retail recreational sales, and I expect full compliance with this prohibition until the business receives its formal license from the CRC. With that, Ms. Blake, please take us on to the next agenda item.
Next is our open public comment period.
Thank you. So, members of the public, as always, can submit public comments during and after this meeting in writing via our website at nj.gov/cannabis/meetings. The deadline for submitting written comments is 5:00 PM tomorrow, Tuesday, April 12. Written comments will be shared with the commission members and will be made public along with the meeting's minutes. So, we will hear from those individuals who have signed up to speak in the order in which they signed up. As usual, public speakers will be limited to three minutes, so please be mindful and concise during your comments. Please note that the public comment period is meant to give members of the public an opportunity to address the commission about matters that the commission should be aware of. It is not a place for people to simply market or advertise private businesses. Please keep your remarks focused on matters that pertain to the commission's work or items that the commission should be aware of. Ms. Blake will call out the names of our speakers. When it is your turn to speak, she will ask you to unmute yourself. If you are dialing in on the phone, and it looks like we have quite a few call-in listeners, you will need to press star six to unmute yourself when told to do so. Importantly, in order for our staff to unmute individuals who have signed up to speak, their full name or your phone number, as it appears on Zoom, must match the name or phone number you used to register to speak. So, please, 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 ensure that your name matches the name you used to sign up. If you need to change your name on the Zoom platform, exit the Zoom meeting and immediately relaunch the Zoom meeting, which should prompt you to enter your name. If you're joining us by phone, the phone from which you're calling must match the number that was used to sign up. Unfortunately, we will not be able to correctly identify you as a speaker if your name or phone number does not match what you used to sign up. So, with that, Ms. Blake, please take it away.
Good afternoon again, everyone. As a commission, as Chairwoman Wei Nu said, I'll be calling the names five at a time. If you are here, please raise your hand so that I know to call you. Everybody has three minutes to speak, and you will follow the timer on the screen. First five names, Michael Rutterow, Velda Font, Cesaria Stevens, Kamika Braswell, Chase Feebolt. Again, Michael Rutterow, Velda Font, Cesaria Stevens, Kamika Braswell, and Chase Feebolt. If any of those individuals are present, please raise your hand, and you'll be invited to speak. Okay, not seeing any of those individuals present, I will go to the next five. Jeffrey Dorsey, Zach Katzen, Christina Faragala, Barry Dahl, Nicholas Ahern Skakakis, Jeffrey Dorsey, Zach Katzen, Christina Faragala, Barry Dahl, Nicholas Ahern Skakakis. Are any of those individuals present? Again, please ensure that the name on your screen is the same that you, as you registered. I don't see any of those five, so I will move to the next five. Jumei Akinagaba, Paul Josephson, Anthony Campbell, Hassan Austin, Valley Heyhurst, Jumei Akinagbe, Paul Josephson, Anthony Campbell, Hassan Austin, and Valley Heyhurst. Are any of those individuals present? Hassan Austin, go ahead. Hassan?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, great, yes. Hello, I am Hassan Austin. I'm managing partner of MTN Biz Development. We are a business development agency, and we focus on social equity business solutions on a local level. We aid the public and private sector in achieving social equity goals and solutions in cannabis. So, you know, I heard several, you know, MSOs speak on the call. You know, it's good to hear that ATCs are taking some initiatives to fulfill the expectation of social equity. Social equity has different meanings to different people and organizations. So, the best way, what we see to guard against potential liabilities on the local level, you know, organizations like ATC should demonstrate an unambiguous commitment to fulfilling that expectation of social equity. It's a very sensitive matter in New Jersey municipalities, and maybe I missed it, but I don't recall none of the ACCs discussing or even any participation in any medical cannabis educational initiative. Patient access is great, but providing tools, resources, and requisite education for the patient population is how access can be best maximized by New Jersey municipalities. Social equity benefits, like education, shall, you know, best streamline those stigmas. These are real stigmas in New Jersey municipalities. And it should start with medical cannabis educational workshops for the patient population in those ATC communities that they are already existing in and will continue to enter additional communities. It should include medical cannabis training for law enforcement, fire departments, you know, not just the patient population, because that education really is a requisite to access and what access really is. And so, we've learned that social equity is a very elusive definition, and it has to be defined in a way on a local level that it is inclusive. We do not exclude parties, particularly the underserved communities. There's a bill in the House that speaks to providing insurance coverage for visits. They do it in New York, they should do it in New Jersey. And the ATCs might be a good idea for you guys to get behind that, push that, because insurance coverage is also part of the medical cannabis access equation. So, I'm just going to leave that right there. Thanks again, CRC, for your time, and keep up the great work that you continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Rutterow? Mike Rutterow, go ahead. Mike Rutterow?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi, yes. My name is Mike Rutterow, co-owner of Pure Cultivation, actually one of the conditional applicants that was just mentioned earlier in the meeting today. So, exciting day for us. I actually was just asking for a moment to speak here today for kind of a specific issue related to micro, microbusinesses, particularly cultivation. And that is, we're just, we're looking for some guidance on the 2,500-square-foot restriction on microbusinesses. You know, I've gotten some feedback from different sources that interpret the regulations differently, where, you know, the 2,500-square-foot restriction applies to, you know, certain aspects of the operation. And some say, you know, interpret it as, you know, 2,500-square-foot is the restriction on your canopy space. And now, you know, I am not an attorney, but, you know, just in, you know, trying to plan and design, you know, a lean and, you know, efficient, you know, micro grow that is conducive to, you know, the economy and also the environment. You know, I think just, we're looking for some guidance on, you know, what it is that the CRC and the state specifically had envisioned for, you know, that, you know, restriction. But thank you very much for letting me speak. That was all I have, and thanks again. Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you. Barry Dahl, go ahead. Barry Dahl, go ahead. Going once? Going twice? Barry Dahl? Okay, Paul Josephson, go ahead.
Good afternoon.
Paul Josephson, I'm, go ahead. I'm sorry about that.
Can you, can you hear me now, Ms. Blake?
Yes, yes, I can. Go ahead. That was my fault.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Blake. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted to take the time today to wish the Commission a happy birthday, to thank you all for your, your hard work. It's been quite a year since you've been up and I think while everybody is very anxious to get things rolling, I think you've far surpassed what anybody could have hoped to do, agency could get done in a year. And so thank you all for your hard work and dedication to the patients and the people of New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you. Next five up are Stephen Maynard, Tiffany Salas, George DiFernando, Ferdinand Jr., Mike Courtney, and Marcus Moore. That is Stephen Maynard, Tiffany Salas, George DiFernando, sorry, Mike Courtney, and Marcus Moore. If any of those individuals are present, please raise your hand and we will call on you. I see Dr. DiFernando, go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm an internist and public health professional and the former deputy commissioner of the New Jersey Department of Health, where I had, among other things, responsibility for the Division of Addiction Services. I'm concerned that today on the imminent initiation of recreational sales that are public or healthcare and public health communities are not adequately prepared to minimize potential harms that will be associated with that initiation. These potential harms could and that should be minimized. Recreational sale will lead to increased use of cannabis products among all age groups. And yet, when used as a recreational product, cannabis has no documented safe level of use. Thus, preparations need to be made to mitigate potential harms from increased use. Limiting these potential harms must first focus on young children, young adults, persons who are pregnant, and our senior population. Our actions, I'm urging, can be summed up in six words. Prevention first and never be cheerleading. Before initiating recreational sales, current local use and local prevention efforts should have been assessed in more detail. Education outreach are urgently needed to ensure that the public is aware of lower risk cannabis usage guidelines to prevent as many negative offenses as possible. Prevention first. Unfortunately, there's currently an absence of detailed state issued information on guidance on prevention, either at the CRC or the Department of Health sites. Yet we don't have to go out of state to see how to minimize harm in a new recreational business. The Division of Gaming Enforcement within the Department of Law and Public Safety is responsible for oversight of all forms of gaming in New Jersey. It lists resources on responsible gambling just below the director's bio, including hotline numbers to call for aid, ways to opt out of gambling if you have a problem, and other resources to reduce harm. If the Division of Gaming Enforcement can do this, the CRC and DOH can and must do the same. We must never be seen as cheerleading for recreational use. Approval for sales prior to detailed discussion, planning, and action on education and interventions, however, may be read by some as enthusiasm for use and consequently increase harm. In contrast, there's no official enthusiasm for use of other intoxicants and prevent potential harmful activities such as alcohol use, tobacco use, vaping, or gaming. How our actions are to seemingly encourage cannabis sales consistent with such admonitions on the use of other substances, we should never be cheerleading for use. To sum up, I don't want to block retail sale of cannabis in New Jersey. I do believe is important, however, to plan intervention and action first to minimize harm the same way we've done with years of tobacco and alcohol counter programming. Thank you very much for your time today and I will be submitting written comments with more detail.
Thank you very much. Just to note that the NJ CRC website does in fact have a safe use page, which among other things talks about responsible usage and points to the Center for Poison Control and also addiction resources. Mike Courtney? Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
I'm going to be real quick. I want to take, thank Director Brown and the CRC. I pointed out an issue that occurred during the application process and everything was fixed diligently. So I would just like to again thank Director Brown and the CRC for quickly resolving the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I call the next five, I just want to remind everyone that I'm looking for your name or a phone number that matches your application. Next five up are Bill McKee Jr., Chris Goldstein, Ryan McGee, James S. Miller, and Precious Osagi Erase. That's Bill McKee Jr., Chris Goldstein, Ryan McGee, James S. Miller, and Precious Osagi Erase. If you are here, please raise your hand and I will invite you to speak. Chris Goldstein, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks again today and, and again, like everyone else, I want to congratulate the NJ CRC on one year of operations. You are doing amazing work. A little bit surprised today at some of the approvals, the idea of, as a cannabis consumer, it's going to be a little tough for us to find our way through all of the people, perhaps coming from Pennsylvania and New York as well, to just thirteen locations for adult use sales. Patients will be utilizing these locations as well. And I did hear a lot of good stuff from the dispensaries today, but they had permission to start curbside and home delivery for almost two years under special rules and waivers by the CRC related to COVID. So I, I do hope to see home delivery start for patients soon. That's another promise that they say could happen this week or next week. We heard that a lot during the pandemic as well. We're still waiting to see price relief in a lot of the dispensaries. I know Executive Director Brown noted that some sales and promotions are happening for medical patients. Again, this is tough. Medical patients are medical patients. They should be able to plan out their monthly costs of cannabis. They shouldn't have to come in when a moon is in the quarter phase, wearing a T-shirt with a brand on it to ask for a discount. Finally, today, we'd like to see some form of tax amnesty, maybe for consumers. There's a lot of talk about equity as it relates to businesses, equity as it relates to taxes. But how will the consumers get into the equity game too? What do we deserve as part of the equity and impact? Now, a lot of cannabis consumers like me have an arrest, but I don't want to start a business. Many cannabis consumers are out here with an arrest and we don't want to get into the industry. So what kind of equity could be created for us? I might suggest tax amnesty. Maybe there's a way that those of us out here are just consumers who have a marijuana arrest could get some amnesty on those adult use cannabis taxes. Maybe we could walk in and get no taxes on our purchases. That would be a nice extension of equity to consumers who have arrests. And, you know, finally today, as far as the ATC expansion, a lot of these operate in multiple states, especially in Pennsylvania. The NJ CRC recently approved concentrates. There was a large recall of concentrates by the Pennsylvania Department of Health within that medical marijuana program. So I hope that as NJ CRC looks forward at safety, it will take into account that other programs are recalling products that may be available or produced in the same ways right here in New Jersey. So I hope that regulators are aware of that. Thank you again for all your work and thank you for hearing me out today.
Thank you. Barry Dahl on the phone, go ahead. Barry Dahl?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes. Hi. You can hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
First of all, I would like to know if anyone else is having difficulty hearing the presentation on the computer. I can get the visuals, but the audio is all broken up. And that's why I have my phone on while looking at the visuals. So if it's my side, I'll look into it, but if there's something else on the technical side, maybe you have something to do with it. Secondly, I would like to agree with the speaker that you had previous. I believe you introduced him as some doctor, former state official who warned about the labels and, and certain types of warnings that people need to, to, to look at and be aware of. I believe he, you referred to the words cheerleading. And I got the same impression listening to the panel, the commissioners, when everyone is saying, oh, we, we need more, come on and, and open up, start selling it. And I don't think that's the way that this should be presented. There are some hazards with the use of marijuana. And so it's not like we're selling popcorn here or ice cream. And so anyone to, as they said, cheerlead, I think is the wrong way to, to package it. And as a taxpayer and voter, I do not feel less appropriate and I'm against it. I have more comments which I will submit in writing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Press Yamu, Aziza McGill Ayinde, Monique Hamilton, Crystal Mart, Matt Rackow. If any of those individuals are present. I see Aziza McGill Ayinde? Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Um, I am actually, first I want to say, yes, happy birthday to the New Jersey CRC and I really appreciate all the information that you've been providing. Because I do understand that this is quite a, an exhausting process to go from something that was initially illegal to now legal. I am the Chair of the East Orange Cannabis Board and we have only just begun our process of, you know, possibly accepting applications, developing kind of a structure. And I guess I have a question pertaining to something specific that came up in one of our meetings, which was one of our informational meetings. Well, before I get into that question, I am also, I also run a nonprofit that helps in the prevention and recovery of the, the prevention of child molestation, domestic violence, and sexual assault. So, you know, especially for the people that we work with, many of our clients do use, you know, or have used or are looking to use cannabis for, as a form of therapy. But not only that, in addressing abusers and people that have been committed of some form of sex crime. I was looking through the New Jersey ordinance under the ability for a convicted felon to apply for a license, but I didn't see anything that was specifically outlined pertaining to sexual crimes, Megan's Law, and you, so on and so forth. There was a lot of information about cannabis specifically, or cannabis crimes or crimes related to marijuana. So I wanted to know if the commission plans on clarifying some of the things. I understand that the decisions are made on a case by case basis if an applicant has been convicted of some kind of crime. But will there be any future exploration of looking to more specific crimes like, you know, some form of sexual assault or child molestation, things like that?
Thank you. Press Yamu, go ahead. Oh, you disappeared. Okay, Crystal Mart, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I came and I was pleased to hear the response from the commission on the ATC's expansion. I was myself worried as a consumer that the medical patients would be, you know, tossed to the side and I'm glad to hear that the ATCs have a good plan to prioritize those medical patients. I would, I'm here to say that I would push those ATCs to strengthen, as another commenter stated, strengthen their relationships with the social equity businesses that are going to rise in New Jersey. They're blessed to have already been operational and gained the first profits from recreational sales. And I think it's important to hold them to building productive partnerships with the smaller businesses that are going to win licenses like we saw earlier with the conditional licenses that got approved. And so those big companies like Verono to, to really commit not just to hiring people from impact zones, not just to hire people that are Latinx, because it's a difference in empowerment there. You're paying an employee, that's awesome, but for you to actually commit to getting a product from a small cultivator or a small manufacturer will go even further to strengthening their promise to social equity and will really put their money where their statements are. So that's what I came to say and happy birthday to the CRC. You guys are doing a great job. And I really do appreciate the patience that you took to, to vet the ATCs to make sure that they were ready so that there, it, it wasn't just a money grab from them and that you're holding them accountable to doing right for all of us. So thanks.
Thank you. Monique Hamilton?
Hello, I am Dr. Monique Hamilton and I'm board certified in internal medicine. I'm the co-founder and lead physician for the Dr. Monique Hamilton Medical Center, DMMC, in South Orange, New Jersey. The use of prescription opioids for the management of pain has drastically contributed to America's opioid epidemic. Medical cannabis is a safer alternative when used for pain control. There is no fatal overdose associated with cannabis use and there are not many negative side effects associated with it. However, many physicians may be reluctant to recommend cannabis to their patients for pain management because of its negative stigma. Increasing New Jersey patient access to this treatment can be achieved through educating healthcare practitioners on the benefits of cannabis for many common chronic conditions, including chronic pain and anxiety. There's a general lack of knowledge about the endocannabinoid system in the medical community because it is not traditionally taught in US medical schools or residency training programs. I'm sure there are medical practitioners who are seeking alternatives to addictive and potentially fatal prescription opioid and benzodiazepine medications, but simply do not have knowledge about how cannabis can effectively treat many common conditions. As a result, medical practitioners are less likely to offer cannabis as a treatment alternative. It is important to not only educate patients about the benefits of medical cannabis, but physicians as well. Not only will educating providers about medical cannabis enable them to provide this treatment to their patients, but it will also increase the number of physicians registered with the New Jersey Medical Cannabis Program. Currently, there are almost one hundred and thirty thousand patients, as Executive Director Jeff Brown stated, registered in the New Jersey Medical Cannabis Program, but only nine hundred and sixty-eight physicians registered. The state of New Jersey can provide a solution to this problem by funding efforts to educate medical practitioners and patients about the benefits of medical cannabis. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Press Yamu, go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Press Yamu. I'm a resident of the great city of Hack City, Jersey. I want to thank the commission for committing countless hours towards regulating cannabis industry in a garden state and fostering an environment where cannabis can begin to benefit local businesses and taxpayers. I'm sure that all present are aware the cannabis markets projected to reach a stellar $200 billion by 2028. As a resident of this industry state, it is encouraging to see there are roughly one hundred and eighty-seven applications actively under review by the CRC as of March. New Jersey as a state will not fail to stake itself in the cannabis market while backed by its entrepreneurial citizens and their endeavors supported by the CRC chasing commissions. With that said, I would like the important mission to adhere to their commitment of awarding licenses to minorities and women owned businesses. There's tremendous opportunity for local enrichment and not only the communities of urban capital, but elsewhere across the state where minority women owned businesses are rooted. Thank you. Again, my name is Press Yamu. I'm a special data scientist, chair, board, community group, which is a nonprofit posted in New Jersey. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Wei Nu, that was our last, actually, hold on, we just have Jim Miller. Well, he went away. That was our last public speaker. I return the meeting to you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Blake, and thank you to all of our members of the public who provided their input this afternoon. This concludes the business before the Cannabis Regulatory Commission for today. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I make a brief comment before we adjourn?
Is it about the motion to adjourn, Commissioner Barker?
Not specifically. It will get us closer to adjourned. Just just want to make a brief comment, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barker, you have a floor.
Thank you very much. Just want to say good afternoon. Want to thank everybody for joining. I'm not going to keep you all long. Just want to very sincerely congratulate all of the awardees. As Director Brown alluded to, we now have 100 conditional licensed awardees in the pipeline under review, hopefully moving through our industry. Specifically to the ATC's, you represented your commitment to equitable and safe priorities and we look forward to partnering with you on accountability measures so that we realize these commitments here in New Jersey. Thank you very much and have a great day all.
Thank you, Commissioner Barker. So I will go back to seeing if there is a motion to adjourn today's public meeting.
So I move to adjourn, Madam Chair.
I second that.
Moved by Vice Chair Delgado, seconded by Commissioner Delcito. Is there any discussion on this motion to adjourn? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Are there any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you all again for joining today's meeting. Please visit our website to view the approved 2022 calendar of regular meetings. Our meetings will continue to be conducted virtually until further notice. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 4th at 1:00 PM. The time is now 3:30 PM and we are adjourned. Have a great rest of the day.